This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, uh, so welcome to the East Hampton City Council Finance Committee Budget Meeting. It is 5:30 on May 7th, 2024. Yeah, I pulled up the May 7th. One sec. Okay. Yep, I corrected. It is May 6th. So I assume we don't have any new minutes? No, 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 I just.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Um, so tonight, we're going to be going over Public Works, Enterprise, and Culture and Recreation. Uh, so, uh, I think we'll just do them in that order unless anyone has any objection to that. And, uh, let's start, I assume no minutes since last week? Okay. Um, let's see, uh, Mayor's Communication, the mayor cannot make it, uh, public speak. Do any members of the public have anything they'd like to share? Go ahead.
Kevin Zizzi, Overlook Drive. I just had a question and it might not be able to be answered during the meeting, but in reviewing the Enterprise Fund and sort of trying to understand how those systems work, looks like the indirect costs could come out of the general fund. I just wasn't sure if the Enterprise Fund's indirect costs were coming out of the general fund or whether they're excluded in the Enterprise Fund solely.
When we get to that place, if you'd like to elaborate on.
Yeah, I think they're charged back to the Enterprise.
Anything else in terms of public? Okay. Then, uh, I think we'll just move on to, uh, Public Works. So let me just share my, uh, I'm gonna get this workflow down like pretty soon, I think. Okay. So, uh, we'll start off with the Department of Public Works budget. Uh, this has a bunch of components, so we can just go through them. I'll blow this up. A little large. Um, okay, so the first block here is DPW Admin. We have Greg Donaldman, our DP Director. Here, do you want to sort of walk us through? It seems like not a tremendous amount has changed in this category. Oh, you know, it just keeps doing this and then it like comes back. I don't know what that's all about.
Uh, admin's pretty straightforward. It's just salary, I'm stipend for the Board of Public Works and some small line items for just kind of operational things for the year.
Okay, yeah, um, I don't see any major changes here, so. Just sort of as usual. Um, next up is fuel. It looks like, uh,
Well, I always like to mention when we talk about the fuel budget, it's the, it's not just the DPW, it's the entire city.
Um, and it's gone, it was, it's sort of an interesting one because it was 194 in '23 and then 142 in '24 and now it's going up to 200.
Yeah, we haven't, we didn't have enough money. Last year I had to go for a pretty strong appropriation to finish out the fiscal year.
Yes.
And we're, uh, we're in the same boat this year. I'll be in front of the City Council before long for a fuel appropriation. Finishing out the year, it's just our fuel contracts adjust based on CPI, so it can be challenging to say exactly where we're going to end up.
Right.
I think it's CPI, might adjust on, there's some even pricing or something, but I don't have, I don't know, all the contract language. It is, it can adjust.
Okay. Um, so we've got, I mean broadly, I could go department by department, but like big picture, is there any sort of narrative stuff you'd like to share? Any, I mean, not really, I mean, just there.
Basically, it all, it's very heavy on, it's operational.
Right.
We're not asking for anything over and above what we need just to make the city run for the year. I mean, everything that is over and above operations will come through either appropriations from capital stabilization or retained earnings. Our whole, every single one of the DPW line, budget lines is really heavily based on just making it all work.
Okay. Um, in terms of, uh, engineering, which great straightforward expenses actually went down. Hey, I'm sorry, I have been rude and not asking my colleagues. Do you have any?
Let's have a couple of questions. So like computer forms, supplies, bringing supplies that up above, there was, um, telephone, is that not going through IT? Is this like a separate thing?
So cell phone allowances are paid to staff, city staff, instead of them having city assigned cell phones, I think it's less expensive. For each departments, so you'll see cell phone allowance come up again in other parts of the budget. Um, most of the IT computer kind of stuff, we handle through the IT Department now. But we kept those line items in there in case we just need a random set of paper for the plotter printer or something that IP doesn't have it there.
Okay, because procurement was purchasing all the stuff and so that's why I wasn't sure if this was like a holdover of like, oh, just in case there at the.
It's kind of all just to keep, like if their transit that they use, the level breaks and we need to replace it, that just there's some funding in the budget there, it's not, you know, we don't usually need to buy them, uh, the engineers a whole lot during the year. We will have a new engineering staff member coming on in FY25, hopefully we'll find someone and, um, so they'll need a little bit of, uh, equipment to get started, but nothing too extravagant.
Right, yeah. I mean, these are small numbers, but I was just curious given the fact we've already met with procurement.
All right. Highways up next. Again, looks like this really hasn't changed a whole lot from last year. Any functions here, councilors? I'm just a little curious, uh, for, when we're talking for the highway department, what is, uh, professional services?
Uh, traffic control. Um, if anything, if we have a piece of equipment that goes down and we have to have a different vendor work on it, that we have a oil separator that needs to be cleaned down there in the garage, in the garage bay for the floor drains, things like that, we'll use if we have to have the traffic lights repaired. Um, any, any kind of outside vendor coming in to do something that our guys can't do. Or even if the heat were to break at the highway department and we had to call a vendor in to fix the furnace.
Right.
Mostly.
Notice that the, uh, the repair and maintenance item has gone up about 25%.
We, uh, have historically where we were funding cutting edges for snow plows from the snow budget. Not counting, the Audit Office has wanted us to do not fund those from snow budget and build them into our repair and maintenance budget, so I shouldn't see those. So that's why we, we just ask for the funding to be there.
Right. Sounds.
That's a question. I just really just got it. For the community, can you explain? A two-minute concrete?
Asphalt.
Okay, great. And so our roads are kind of, right? Like, I think we can all agree that our roads could use.
I beg to differ there. I mean, I think we've gotten a lot of paving done.
No, I totally agree.
We're getting every penny we can out of everything we do. I mean, is there a lot of roads in the city that need work? Absolutely. Um, but a number of them, we can't go and pave, you know, right away. One, because we don't have the money, or two, because there's water and sewer utilities beneath them that need to get, uh, need to get replaced first or drainage work.
I totally agree. And so this is my question, actually. So I, I, that's one of the biggest complaints I hear is related to roads. So it says there's $93,000 here. Is that enough to repair all the roads that we have in the city?
No, that's not even enough to repair one. I mean, what I try to do when I explain this to people is put it in perspective. When we did Main Street, we didn't do any water sewer utility work when we did Main Street, or very minimal. We might have relocated a fire item or done a couple of small things, but no main replacement. That was 1.2 million dollars by the time we were done. And that was Main Street from Park Street right there by the library to, to South. So that's a, the YDS is stretch of roadway, but I mean, a million dollars. So, you know, you look at that, that 93,000 there, I mean, some people might be familiar, a couple of years ago, we paved, uh, Prospect Street, Hill Avenue and Surll Avenue. I mean, that, those three streets were right about $100,000, so. That 93,000 that you see there will go, that's asphalt, generally asphalt picked up, not in place. So our, we get loaded with that asphalt, that Palmer paving, say, or whoever. whichever asphalt plant's open earlier has the contract that year. And that goes out to patch, basically patching. And if we get to the end of the fiscal year and we've got a little bit of funding left, we'll try to pull all the by-two-minute line items together from each division and go and try to do some small side streets if we can, but um, it's, it's really challenging because it's, it's hard to take all that money and put it on a road that I know has a 1940 two-inch galvanized water service on it that needs to be done. I mean, that's part of, one of the challenges we're up against with paving some of the dead-end streets off of Main Street. That, like St. James due to, um, one more down there. Man, I can't think of the name of it, but, um, that have ancient undersized water mains that need to be replaced. So, you know, we've worked hard over the last couple of years to get the water sewer rates pushed up and so we can start funding some more of that work. And, uh, you know, as the revenue starts to get captured from those increases, uh, in water and sewer rates, we'll hopefully be able to knock out some of the underground work, so then we can go and pave them. I mean, you pave a road like that, probably going to get, I think they're original, I mean, they're from the 50s, well, they were oil and stone and now the patches are kind of holding the patches together, but we really got to tackle a lot of that underground work before we can get to the boat. Otherwise, it's just, we do it on a vibratory roller over it and the water main breaks and you're digging the road back up.
So if I, so if I understand correctly, right, for the, for the community, right, so people who are listening or people who watch this, sometimes we allow, we don't kind of redo the roads because they're so old underneath that we wait for grants and things like that that we can get, that we can then do that under kind of repair and then put a nice kind of roadway on top of that after all of those are.
If we can, sure. I mean, anytime we can get a grant, grant funding to take some burden off the Enterprise Fund, we, we try to, we chase them all over the place, but take grants all over. So it's just tough because even, you know, you think of 90, 93,000 or $100,000 is a lot of money when it comes to road paving. It's just not.
Right.
You know, we get 460,000 a year from State's Chapter 90 allotment. And, uh, you know, we need to redo the bridge decks on Fort Hill Road and Tory Street this year. And the budget price I just got for that is 458 or 468,000 dollars. Let's just do bridge decks. So it's, it's just a challenge.
Right, yeah. Great. Thank you very much for that clarification.
Um, okay. That's the, exactly the kind of sort of like, you know, context stuff that I, I think is important for, for people to understand as we move through this process. There's a lot there that I could sort of add to realize about, but it's not exactly related to the budget, so I'm gonna sort of, we can have those conversations another time. Um, snow, so this is like the one item that we're allowed to, but it sounds like we're, we're shifting a little bit the way that we're, at least with some of this.
Yeah, Mass DOR has some regulations that they didn't, maybe we weren't following them to the T and they want, they want us, it's the snow pile blades, it was the only thing we were changing. We moved out of there. I think we just have to fund snow with the same amount as we did in the previous fiscal year.
Okay.
And then we can deficit spend it. We'll be close, working on closing it all out now.
Right.
For this fiscal year, yes.
I think that's one of our things for Wednesday, right? Any questions on snow? Seems the same amount as it is pretty much every year. Um, okay, uh, streetlights. Any, anything to report? The streetlights?
Not really, no. I mean, as painful as the LED light changeover was a couple of years ago, I think we've gotten through most of the challenges with that. Um, you know, I think it's, I think it's great that we did it because we'd be paying a lot, we'd be looking at a lot more challenges with the cost of operating the old streetlights, so. Thanks everyone again for being with us with that.
Uh, about motor repair, anything?
No, I mean, uh, contract, um, contract, uh, union contract salary increases are in there.
Sure.
Um, and that's just to employees, uh, their cell phone allowances, it's pretty bearable. It's a lot of work motor repair does, we'll find out at what department, whose vehicle they're working on, so.
Right. Any questions on motor repair? I'm, I'm, what exactly, um, is the differentiation between the stuff that's funded under highway and was funded under traffic?
Traffic is most like long line painting. That's just one example. Like, we just painted most of the W L lines across the city.
Okay.
So we'll find out out there, any, um, small like engineering studies to look at, an intersection or challenge that we're, we're facing. I'll buy, we get to the end, you never know how much it's going to cost to do, um, like the line painting, painting in any given year. And if we get to the end of fiscal year, there's some money left, we'll do some, we try to kind of pull everything together that we have, go and pave a side street or two if we can.
Okay.
With some of that funding.
Clarifying question. So for professional services, is that your staff that does that or do you hire?
No, anytime you see professional services, that's generally an outside vendor company, whether it's an engineering firm or the line painting company. Could even be asphalt in place. Yeah, high plumber, David Street.
Yep. Just want to make sure we keep sympathy, so I want to make sure.
Okay. Cycling and hazardous waste doesn't look like it's really changed. Any questions there, anything? Um, trash has gone a bit, but I know that mine, mine trash bill has too. Anything changed in the, in the, this area with the trash?
Um, no, nothing, nothing major. I mean, we, um, with the three schools closing, we just have the one container at Mountain View now that we have to empty a little more often, so wasn't much of a savings really because it's still the same amount of people and the same, um, refuse generation.
Right. And what are, what are the professional services that go into the landfill over here? Because they seem pretty consistent in what they're budgeting for.
Yep, so environmental testing, there's groundwater wells that need to be monitored and compliance reports that need to be filed annually with SDP. We contract current of Stan Tech, engineering, engineering firm Stan Tech, uh, to do those for us. Also mowing. Um, we have to keep the landfill caps pretty heavily maintained and mowed. We don't do that in-house, we have contractors that takes care of that for us. Perfect here, it's just environmental compliance and mowing, but you never know what else could happen, so.
Okay. Um, does cemetery fall under public works?
No, that's parks.
That's parks, okay, so we'll come back to that later. That's everything for Public Works, so, um, I think that's also, so I think we can go to Enterprise now. Oh, oh, I guess you're right. So I'll skip over cemetery. Oh. Uh, yeah, I guess the, the tree warden is the next thing. Are we, do we have a tree warden at the moment?
I am currently serving as the city's tree warden.
Okay.
And we're working on, um, building a little bit more of a robust, uh, tree, urban canopy management program. Um, as we look at how the bike path maintenance will be handled over the next couple of years and transitioning, you know, there's been some discussions of the bike path transitioning from the volunteer committee under the umbrella of Public Works and we're trying to kind of tie that all together and as we put the, uh, as the bike path comes to the DPW, perhaps whoever ends up, you know, as the supervisor for that division, uh, would take on the role of tree warden. I mean, maybe the city starts discussing forming a public shade tree committee. Uh, we need, we need to do more than we are for the urban canopy. Um, and I think, uh, what we've done for FY25 is increase the professional services line item slightly to bring in a consulting arborist to kind of give us a hand with moving in that direction and, and do a little bit more than we, than we are. It's, it's, it's tough because tree work gets, it's very expensive very quickly. Just any planting one tree is almost a thousand dollars by the time you bought a tree and nursed it along. Um, so it's, um, something that we need to do better with, but steps to do that need to be taken slowly because there's a lot of things that we need to, city has to fund, so.
Right. Okay. All right. Any questions on that? All right, let's move to Enterprise. Okay. So. Anything, uh, what's, what's new to report in Enterprise?
Um, well, I'm short several staff members and especially in the sewer department. So you see kind of a little underspent there, but we're doing everything we can to try to attract people to come work here and the sewer department's always kind of one of the harder divisions that keeps staffing, so. Kind of, other than that, it's basically just operational. So I mean, you'll see increases across the board for, minor increases to professional services just for increasing costs for next year. And it's basically it, it's really just focusing on keeping it all working.
Okay. And so is this, with, with this section, is, is this, um, sort of just for the operation of, like, as in, if we're, we're anticipating more Enterprise funds coming in this year as a result of the increased rates, right?
Sure, yeah.
So is that, is this where that's going or is that going more into specifically capital projects that might not be in the like operational budget?
So whatever we're able to capture over and above our operating expenses closes to Enterprise retained earnings. And then we look at those balances and what we have to, you know, say what we have to match for a grant. If we did get a grant for a certain project, what is needed for match funding? We're working right now on, uh, we got a grant a little over, just under a million dollars for the wastewater treatment plant to replace the four aerators. We coupled that with a mass DP gap three energy grant, brought that number from 980 to about a million, one and a half. And there's match fund, funding associated with each of those grants. And, uh, I think we'll need a little bit, I don't, we opened bids in a couple of weeks, but, um, so we'll know exactly what we need, but so that increased, those increases in water and sewer rates, one helps with the operational cost plus whatever closes out is then there either for grant match funding or go do a water main replacement or make a capital investment at the wastewater plant or, I mean, every vehicle in our fleet at the wastewater plant is pushing on 10, either over 10 years old or, right, knocking on the door at 10 years old, so. There's just, just a lot of investments to make down there.
Right. Okay, that makes sense. I was, yeah, that makes sense to me. Um, councilors, any, any questions on? Sure, that's what I'll.
Thank you. I just have a few small questions. Significant jump in the equipmental compared, what are you looking at? What are you looking towards this year that's going to cost that much more?
Where are you seeing that in sewer?
Yeah.
Um, we had to rent a street sweeper. Our street sweeper had to be taken out of services in 2006. It just wasn't worth fixing anymore, so we've been renting one. It's about, I think it was about $13,000 to rent one for a month.
Was it cost effective for us compared to only borrowing?
No, we need to buy a new one. I've been working with the mayor on how, how we can do that. Um, but a street sweeper now is about $300,000, so it's not the easiest thing to find, but we're out of the way. So with our compliance with our, uh, MS4 permit for a stormwater collection system, we need to sweep the entire, we're supposed to be sweeping the entire city twice a year and cleaning a certain number of cash basins throughout the city, so. Catch basins stay cleaner if the roads are swept, so it's it's a piece of municipal equipment. We really, we really should have our own even, you know, could we rent one twice a year and maybe sweep the city? Sure, but then we don't have one for those other little events, say, we're paving and we get a bunch of rain and then we end up with dirt all over the road or a truck tailgate pops open, we don't, all those little circumstances where you don't have a machine available.
That's good to know. Yeah.
Um, there's a significant drop in the miscellaneous professional services. What was the cause for the, the difference in that fund last year?
We had quite a bit in there for camera work and some just investigative work that we need to do. And I think, I didn't weigh, weigh in on that getting lowered. I think it's something that the mayor did, so it might be a question for her why it had. I know it's a challenge for her to, to balance this out every year, so, um, it probably was a case where we didn't spend quite as much last year. It's, like I said, it's challenging to keep the sewer department fully staffed and you can only do so much when you've got a crew of three people or I'm down to two right now with a employee out with an injury, so.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now we've got water. Um, so similar structure, so much thing I'm not seeing. Any massive shifts or anything? Is there anything going on in water that you see as a big shift away from previous operations or?
Uh, no, it's basically operating. We've got a couple of open positions over there right now, but we're, like I said, we're working on getting them filled.
Is that something where it's, um, it's like certifications that are hard to come by or?
Well, sort of. I mean, we, we do a lot to support our staff in getting, um, the required levels of certification and then some, um, they need to have the, um, licensed drinking water system operators, licensed for the state. One of the open positions over there now happens to require that license and a Class A CDL. We have a very difficult time hiring Class A CDL drivers.
Yeah, my understanding is that pretty much everyone does, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Tough.
Well, you can get a, you can get a CDL and go probably make $35, $40 an hour or something. I mean, that's one of our staff members just left. He took a job with, uh, oil gas and electric and we just can't compete with him salaries.
Is somebody finding it hard to attract and pay? attract and, and, I mean, so I look at that.
Yeah.
Also, is that, is that the biggest stumbling block and attracting, retaining people who what you could see as that being that stumbling block?
For, well, not all of our jobs require quite class A CDLs. Most everyone has at least a B. Um, but yeah, it's mostly just wages. I mean, I hear the guys say that, you know, the, you know, the benefits are great, but I can't pay my bills with, with great benefits. So it's, it's just hard. I mean, the gentleman that left here was making, I don't know, twenty six, maybe twenty seven dollars an hour and he went to, uh, H C and E for forty three. So we just can't. Can't come close.
Counselor.
Uh, can you help me understand miscellaneous professional services again? Like, you know, like a few years ago it was one nineteen, then it was seventy three and then it was ninety three and now it's twenty eight. Like, what's the large fluctuation and kind of, I understand kind of a gradual climb, but.
Sure. So professional services on the, uh, water department side will pay for, uh, traffic control if the guys, if they're out digging. You know, we need to have a section of road closed. Um. Pay for lab, uh, lab services. We have to do a whole bunch of different, uh, monthly, uh, semi-annual, annual, um, testing on a public, throughout the public water system. So that would pay for the, the lab that does that. Uh, we've also, uh, recently had to contract out, uh, or, uh, backflow device testing and cross connection surveying work. So that would be funded in there. Anytime we bring in an outside vendor to do something, so. The maintenance on the SCADA system, the supervisor controls and data acquisition that maintain the, uh, tank levels and keep the wells operating. We can see all that from the, uh, plant on Hendrick Street. So any of the maintenance that goes into keeping that, uh, that system up and running, which is becoming more and more as it's, you know, original, the plant is nineteen ninety six. So it doesn't seem like that long ago, but it's all pushing thirty years old and becoming obsolete and more, um, requiring more maintenance, so.
Right. Yeah. So that item is gonna vary year to year depending on what sorts of professional services you're anticipating hiring.
Yep. And if the state, uh, some, you know, we, we're, we have to answer mass DP. So every so many years we have to have the water, uh, tanks inspected and cleaned. Um, things like that are getting more and more expensive every, every time we do structural inspections on the tanks, things like that.
All right. And. Wastewater. Pretty similar situation. Anything we should know about? Looks like we're just gonna be spending a, quite a bit more on chemicals.
Yes, just chemical costs have just gone through the roof since COVID.
Yeah.
You really explain it other than, it's just the, when we have to, when we have to have them, so.
Those are chemicals for creating the wastewater?
Yes. Keeping the odor down. Uh, we have to chlorinate during the summer months, April to October. So we're learning our discharge going out to a genetic river. Cause it's actually rivers still heavily used for recreation. So we have to buy sodium perchlorate to do that. We're looking at, I mean, sludge disposals, a huge, huge expense on the wastewater side.
All the way downstairs. Okay, well. That makes sense.
Sorry. Same with professional services. That seems like.
So that's sludge disposal, which I was, I was getting to is, it's, uh, we pay that out of there.
Yeah, okay.
If we need an electrician to come help fix something at the plant, we pay that, pay for that. Anytime on, anytime an outside vendor comes to assist with something, so. Um, I did get a letter today from our sludge disposal vendor warning us of the new, uh, PFAS regulations that the federal government has about. Basically warning us that if those are gonna affect our profit line, we're gonna come to you to renegotiate our contract. It's basically what it said, so. I can see that increasing next year. So it'll be interesting to see. We won't know the impact of that for a little while, but.
Well, keep up some of the loop on that one, I guess. If that's gonna be a, a big thing, then.
Yeah, hopefully it won't be huge, but we'll, we'll see what happens. They don't usually send those letters if they're not expecting to come next.
Right. And then. Enterprise reserve. This, it looks like we're just making, uh, well, this, this is a relatively new thing or we haven't used it in twenty two or twenty three.
Yep. Well, you're right. It's relatively new, um, something Haley wanted to start doing so that we have some accessible funds for emergencies or, um, there's, if we're waiting for last year's books to close out, there's some funding there that we can get to if we, if, if we need it, basically.
This has been an establishment since enterprise fund has been established. It's just like a reserve fund for general fund.
Right.
We keep reserve fund for water, um, water and sewer department just in case at the end of this year. When it's June thirtieth, then we need to pay some kind of deficit or something. So just like thirty grand are there. Towards, uh, closing the books instead of bringing in appropriate.
But you only, we only recently started procreating money every year, so.
No, this has been going on well before my time.
The fifteen thousand? Oh, FY twenty two, it says zero.
I don't know why.
Twenty three.
It's been going on since well, it's.
Interesting. Um. I guess it doesn't change this. Okay. Mostly worried that this column is correct, but I am a little, I, that, that, that just didn't strike my, didn't catch my attention. And, uh, that's it for enterprise. Any additional questions, counselors? All right, very good. If you think of anything, maybe I'll shoot you an email, but.
Yeah, feel free, absolutely.
Oh, oh, that's right. Building operations also. I forgot about that. Thank you, uh, councilor. Yeah, let's go back to building operation. Yeah, uh. So. Anything new in, it looks like the overtime budget has got a lot up. Is that union stuff?
Um, no, not quite union stuff. We're, um, having, incurring some overtime expenses maintaining the three vacant schools.
I see.
So, um, need to get those transferred. Well, it's easy for me to say, but I think we need to get them off the city's books as soon as we can because it is cost, they're costing money every month and, um, we, we need, we're, the, my building custodians check them, uh, on the weekends. Since we've had some trouble, uh, someone broke into the Pefin school a while back and didn't really damage too much, but they'd get in there. Uh, we did have, we actually had a pipe break, which the building was heated and wasn't even cold when it broke, but a pipe burst in there all over the winter. So it just need to be, they, they need to be checked almost daily, so.
Right. And. This is a place where I, uh, there was a scheduling conflict. I, I sort of wish the mayor was here to give an update on what the outlook on that was, but I, I can ask later. Um. Okay, heat power. Uh, it looks like, so then the, 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 the big thing that stands out here is the, obviously the, uh, building operations solar budget.
Sure. So we receive, um, checks from ever source every month.
Hmm.
Uh, based on the amount of, uh, solar power generated by the, uh, Oliver Street. Landfill solar array.
Right.
And our participation in a contract, I think it's for the town of Deer for that, L S D P's Deer Field, I think. And those checks are coming in. They'll be closing to free cash at the end of the year. And that, basically, they're not, those checks aren't coming in and then being able to be used pay our share of the solar contracts. So what's happening now is my budgets are getting pretty badly, uh, depleted, overpaying those, so overpaying. It's pretty complicated the way the solar contracts work. And I don't have all of it off the top of my head. It's kind of more handled on the financial side of the building. We don't get the checks every month. They go to the treasury office and deposit and then turn over. Yes, they're closing to free cash at the end of the year. And then, so basically what we need to do is fund the money in the building operations budget so we can pay our commitments to the solar, um, companies into the, to the, to those contracts. And then the checks are coming in and we'll close to free cash. So it's kind of, it's more of an accounting thing.
I see.
It's not like, we're not spending that money. It's not, it's, it's coming in and we're making payments out to the, to, uh.
Okay.
To the solar contract companies.
Okay. And, and this has been explained to me before, so now thank you for the reminder of that. It make, I, I've, I've had this discussion enough times that I at least sort of theoretically grasp the flow of that, if not the exact technical.
We used to get big credits on our, a lot of our electric bills.
Right.
And then we would make those payments to L S D P or, um, I can't think of the name of the other solar vendor off my head, but, uh, now, as the solar equipment has, in my understanding is that as the solar equipment has aged, it's more advantageous for the city to accept a check from ever source rather than a credit. And that was the, kind of the big change that, so, uh, I know that we've received well over five hundred thousand dollars in checks from ever source since that change happened. And it's closing to free cash and we don't have access to it to then make the payments to the solar companies, so.
Not, not about that. I mean, I think that Steve explained that to us and, um, I, I do have a couple of questions. Uh, I am seeing kind of a significant jump in uh, maintenance has, uh, heat and fuel. I'm assuming that's because of the three schools that are kind of in limbo.
Yeah, um. And we need, we are, we've entered into a, uh, quarterly, uh, preventative maintenance contract with an HBAC contractor. Just because of the huge investment we just made with the honeywell project and the eight pack systems in this building and the safety complex. You know, there probably should have been one over the years. I mean, we, we found a lot of preferred maintenance things in that project, like things that should have been, um, kind of dealt with on a quarterly basis. A lot of large buildings have, you know, quarterly preventive maintenance contracts where an HVAC technician is coming through checking all of our equipment, changing filters, uh, lubricating anything that needs it, checking the pumps. Um, these systems are pretty, uh, pretty high tech now and they need to have, like, having a professional set of eyes on them every few months. I think it's, it's money well spent, so.
I like to hear that.
We're trying. I mean, it's, um, and it's hard because, you know, they do see problems, but rather than us reacting to them, we're getting to them beforehand and I think it's just doing a little bit of a better job taking care of these buildings.
Great. Um. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions, counsel? All right. I think for this time, sorry for the false alarm. I think this time we are actually all set.
That's all good. No, it's fine. I, I'll, I know. Yeah, anybody has any questions or anything, feel free to send me an email or.
Okay, well done.
Appreciate your explanation about the roads.
Yeah, we're trying.
That was the intent of the question, to provide the community more.
All right. Next group we have up is, I'll hold to the remain, the final group we have up is cultural, culture and recreation. Um. Okay, and that starts with the library. You're more than welcome to stay around, but if you want.
Sure, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah.
Um. Okay, uh, so the library is the first thing in culture and recreation. We have our library director, uh, Katja here with us. Uh, Katja, would you just like to give us sort of an overview of where we're at and, uh, what, uh, what's, what's gonna be coming at us in this fiscal year?
Yeah, um, essentially, there aren't a ton of huge, um, the major budget growth is absolutely in salaries because one of the things that we are doing is finally bringing all of our uh, circulation staff up to, um, seventeen dollars an hour from fifteen, which is the very bottom basically of industry standards. We, it's, you know, we, this is the time to move everybody up. And so that is pretty much the main increase in our budget. Everything else is fairly incremental. Um, the mayor has made a commitment, having looked, we basically have created a new financial model that allows our endowment to support um, slowly bringing the city into providing a larger percentage of our funding as is kind of closer to the state average. Um, and we're trying to do that over a long range process that allows our endowment to support that as we also work on some building projects. Um, the building projects are not reflected in the budget that you see in front of you because that's not the city's responsibility, but we are working on doing some initial renovations to the building at fifty two Main Street.
Oh, no.
Um, just in order to get that usable as an annex space while we figure out what our next steps are.
That's great. Excuse me, if, if you're, um, if you're on this call remote, uh, could you just, uh, stay on mute if you're, uh, if you're not, uh, presenting? Oh.
Yes, and I'm very sorry if what you heard was my five-year-old yelling na na boo boo there. That was definitely him.
Uh, there, I think there's someone on the phone, uh, but it's all, it's all good.
Were you able to hear what I was saying?
Yes, I was.
Okay, great.
Okay, um. Questions, counselors?
Uh, same question. I didn't ask this of, um, EPW director, but there were a lot of budgets, but is this a budget that you are pleased with and you're happy with and you think is fair?
Um, me? Yes. Um, I do, and I really appreciate the mayor's commitment to slowly and sort of like incrementally over time, increasing the city's appropriation for the library. Cause I, my main goal has been all along to bring the library and the city into kind of a closer relationship. Because I think we can save money that way and also support a good and strong and functioning library for the city. And as many of you saw us present last year, without that increased support and that increased but city buy-in, we pretty much are gonna eat our endowment. So I, I've really appreciated both council and the mayor's commitment to understanding that and trying to meet us in the middle so that we can actually run a really good library for the city. I am pleased and I'm really pleased, honestly, this staff wage hike is the thing I'm happiest about because it's deeply overdue.
Great, thank you.
Great. All right, I think that's all that we have, uh, for, uh, library at this time. Um.
Thank you all. I'm gonna, um, leave so I can stop my child yelling at my mother, but I, if you have any questions, please reach out to me.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll shoot you an email if there's anything else I need.
Thank you. And I know Chuck was gonna share the budget projections with you all. If he hasn't already, I'll make sure that he does.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have parks and recreation. And, uh, Director Mason, I believe, is also on the call. Uh. Do you wanna just start off with parks and we'll just work our way through the various sections?
Sure.
Okay, so just broadly, before we dive into the individual numbers, any sort of you know, major sort of context or narrative that you would like to present on, when it comes to parks?
Yeah, uh, well, actually, kind of with all our budgets, you know, that you see an expense line for, for, you know, the parks, the rec, um, cemetery in the, on all our budgets. It, it doesn't reflect, um, the other, uh, expenses that, that we pay out through our program fees, um, for field rentals and um, camp Nantucket and some other things. You, last year we, we did over fifteen thousand dollars, um, in repairs and upgrades. That is not reflected in the budget. So, um, you know, we take, when we take in fees, um, you know, we re. in fees, you know, we reinvest into our facility with those fees. So I think that's an important note to make when you, when you kind of review the, the budget.
Okay. Well, in terms of the portion that we are funding, it looks like most of it is relatively stable. There's not any, I don't see any major changes in any of this. Counselors, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. You know, I would, I would love to be able to see the park. I know your crew does a good job. And they work really hard. And I think one of the biggest challenges are that I hear from community members is wanting the park to be open more year round. And so it's really just a comment of, you know, I would love as a city councillor to be able to advocate for the park, me at mayor, and being able to advocate for the park to be open year round. And so when I look at these numbers, I think, oh, they look in line at the same time, but I would love for the park to get more money to be able to kind of meet the needs of the, of the city. And so I know you have a lot of really great new energy on the board. And so I think it'd be really wonderful to, to really think about a new, not new, but a kind of a year-round vision, so to speak, for the park. And so we'd love to be able to support the park in that.
Counselor, any comments, questions? All right. How about, let's turn to recreation. Once again, I'm seeing, you know, an increase in salary, but we're seeing that basically everywhere step increases, which obviously I'm supportive of, given the increased cost of living. But not really seeing anything else. Is there anything in recreation that you'd want to sort of add to what we're looking at?
No, we're, we kind of told the line on that. You know, the, the, the increase for temporary positions in the recreation is the increase in funding for, that's for lifeguards and pool staff. So to kind of get in line to make sure we're, we're able to, you know, be competitive, if not better, wages for our lifeguards. You know, we, we've been aggressive on that line. And, you know, we have six, five returning and one additional already for this coming year for lifeguards. So that's very exciting to kind of coincide with the, the renovated pool that we're going to have open from late June.
Great. Can't wait to see it.
It's coming along good.
I'm glad to hear that. Okay. And then I need to go. Cemetery is the last one?
Yeah, there's two cemetery ones.
Okay, so that's eighty-seven. Okay. So what has changed or what's gonna, what are we looking at this year for?
I think it's an increase of a hundred or $155 over last year for the expense side. You know, we manage, you know, with what we have, we, we bring our equipment in and refurbish it during the wintertime. You know, that's what the, the staff does. You know, we, we work hard to make sure our, our equipment lasts. So and, and with the cemeteries, there is perpetual care money, if there is larger purchases, things that, that maybe need to be done there. So, you know, we, we kind of just told the line with, with that expense.
Okay.
And then on the Main Street side, since we took that over from twenty, fiscal year 2022 was the last year of outsourcing the, the maintenance over there. So we have our cemetery foreman. So we have cemetery foreman, the cemetery laborer that does 39 weeks out of the year. They do between two and five hours a week over at Main Street to maintain that. And then Sam does clerical. That's been a real challenge for that, for Main Street with the records and working to, to keep that alive. So that's, that's where we've kind of moved the, the needle on department expenses is we brought it in-house and go and take care of it. Because the cemetery staff is not 40 hours a week like other departments. They're 35 for the foreman and 30 for the labor. So it helps them get some more hours and it gets the Main Street cemetery maintenance done in-house.
I see. What is the, the cler, I mean, it's just, it's just interesting to me noticing that over the years, the, the clerical cost has, has gone up pretty significantly.
On this one, clerical should really be all, all, that's clerical and maintenance. That's all professional services for, for Main Street.
Okay.
So for clerical, for, you know, Brookside End, Main Street, Sam, she, she handles all the burials, all the inquiries. You'd be amazed of how many inquiries we get for, from folks regarding cemetery plots, family members. They haven't been in town in 30 years. You know, their aunt passed away, you know, 40 years ago and, and they want to go visit the, this, their, their plot. So there's, there's astonishing how many, how many folks doing quick inquiries about cemetery and family members and things like that.
Okay. And then I think that's it for parks, right? Am I missing anything?
Yeah, that's our, that's our four budgets that we have.
Okay.
The, if I can just add a couple, or unless anybody has any questions, I just had a couple of things extra to add to.
Yeah, of course.
The Wednesday night, we're on the, the docket for two F-150 hybrids. I'm unable to attend the finance meeting, but I will be at the city council meeting on the 15th for the public hearing portion. So I wasn't sure if anybody had any questions regarding the Parks Department.
You know, I'd have to discuss that, but since it's not on the agenda, I don't think we can. But if there's anything we should know for that hearing, feel free to just shoot us an email over the next couple of days and, and with just any information and, you know.
Yeah, I put it in the, I put it, the, the blurb in there on the, on the appropriation and the information on, on the, when we submitted that. So if the, the general information's in there.
Okay. Great. Well, yeah, I'll let you know. I'll look that over an extra time now that I know that you can't be there and see if I have any questions. But, but thanks for the heads up on that. Any additional questions, councilors? Okay.
Well, one, one more thing, I'm sorry. So as, as the, the Park Department is evolving and we're looking at, you know, ways, we, we are, you know, taking income in on our, on one side and putting it back in. And then we also take in income, which I passed out to, emailed you guys. It's something I give in income reports since I've been involved with the Parks and Rec going back to 2010. Historically, what we've taken in and turned over to the city. The commission, as we talk about new blood, you know, we're looking at trying to create some kind of, similar to DPW, an enterprise reserve fund where, where the park would have access to some funds to help offset things and not have to wait for appropriations. As in free cash was, you know, these, these vehicles were long overdue. We've had, we've had the vehicle off the road for six months that one of them's replacing and, and to wait for free cash and is, was a long time. So the, the commission is looking at a model. It's not for this year, but you know, come next year, next budget season to discuss with the mayor, finance, city council, to see if some kind of revenue share structure can be set up and, and where we can start being self-sufficient, you know, not a, not a big number, but things that we can get done and not have to wait for certain funding. So I just want to make sure city council and finance is aware of that, that the commission will be looking at that model next fiscal year.
Okay, great. Well, that sounds like an interesting thing to discuss. All right. Anything else? I think I can let everybody go then. That was a little quicker than I thought it was going to be.
I appreciate your time.
Yes, thanks, John. Um, okay, so we'll be back tomorrow when it's actually the seventh. And we'll be talking then about education. So I'll see everybody then probably, and maybe not everybody, but I'll see a lot of you then. And in the meantime, have a, oh, and that net interest falls as well. Have a good evening. Go, entertain, entertain, I should do a chair. I should second all in favor. Hi. Thanks, everyone.